We'll call the pound select board, town meeting. Regular meeting Thursday, March 21st, 2013 at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes 31413. Warrants, mail, old business. New business would be selectmen appointments. Under this would be actually old business, but we want to talk about contacting our forester, Bruce Richardson, on our timber. And we were having a special meeting, document retention schedule, meeting Monday, the 25th at 6 o'clock here. There will be a meeting of the town office committee, April 1st, 2013 at 6 o'clock here. And under old business, OSHA equipment for the transfer station.
Motion approved the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes 31413. All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, 31713 to 32213, in the amount of 818923. Accounts payable, 3222013, in the amount of 21,48325. Your big ones there are your health insurance at 6,400 and change. Green Mountain Power at 6788. Payroll transfer at 2,900. And those are your warrants. Take a motion?
Motion ain't be accepted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a tobacco license renewal app, and we also have a liquor license renewal app. And they're both by Village Market.
Motion approved on both.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're taking off down there?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh gosh.
Woo hoo!
Oh, makes for good TV.
Okay, we have a letter from the tour of the dragons. Showing their route. And course detailed map, planning for the 213 tour. May 5th, 2013. It shows, map which I'll read out, it says a start. The route is on South Stream Road, goes to Maple Grove Road, to Middle Pound Road. Middle Pound Road to Barber's Pond, continues South Stream to the end of Route. I don't know if you picked that up or not, but...
Is that the nighttime?
No.
That's the bike race. Okay.
There was also that date on the last page. It said it was corrected from the 5th to the 4th.
Tour of the Dragons, correction, it is Saturday, May 4th, 2013. So they have a corrected date. Land use permit for George Messina and Cedar Hill Road. We have a letter from our auditors at the reorganization meeting. Ray Shields Auditor Chair, Betty Baker Recording Secretary. Their next meeting is scheduled for April 22nd, 6:00 PM at Town Office. And that will be our mail. Our meeting in Rutland. Make sure Linda has everybody's name that is going to that by tonight, so she'll have that.
You said yes, Rich? Yes, I'll be there.
Honey?
Nah, I'm not going.
Okay. That will be our mail. Old business, we need a motion from the board, from my understanding. We buy safety equipment approval for OSHA for the highway department, and we should be doing it with the transfer station. So we need to get that on record.
And by safety equipment, we're talking?
Or choose, stuff like that, yes. It's the same setup that the highway department has, it's just to get it in our records that we do such.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
Who's the second?
We always bought them for the sewer project, but I didn't know we bought them for the road.
Who is the second, please?
I was the first. Who did the second?
Well, I don't care.
To your second?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that a lot?
And this is for the required?
Required safety, right.
Safety boots.
Is that a lot that we have to add, though?
OSHA working around hydraulic machinery.
Mm-hmm. It's so much a year. They get one pair a year, something like this, or whatever the figure is a year.
One pair per fiscal.
Kind of sort of dollar amount, all right?
100.
Yeah.
Purchase at the family footwear.
Okay. And Linda, back to our timber thing, will you make a contact with Bruce Richardson at his convenience to meet with us? So we can schedule that, and that's our timber cutting, to see what we can get started on that.
We need to look at the timber harvest schedule as well as the management plan update.
Yeah, seems like the last time we talked to him in here, he thought the spring was the time. That's why we need to get back and freshen our mind with that. The only other thing we have before we go into our selectmen appointments is can I get permission from the board before we have our meeting on this office committee to do some research on what, if any, grants are available? Just by making some calls to different agencies in the state to see what, if anything, is available.
You're gonna cover like the whole gamut of things?
Well, just...
Is there anything in particular that?
Probably from what I'm leaning toward right now is I'm gonna go toward energy, because I think that's probably the only thing that's really out there at the moment. Just touch base and see if anybody's got any fangs on where we should be looking.
And if we apply for a grant, since I'm the kind of the new guy here, who does our grant writing?
Not really sure at this point.
Okay.
I think we've left that up before and...
Depends on the application, the nature, the information needed. I usually assist anyone that's writing.
Yep.
I administer.
That's a tough job.
Well, I think in this day and age, and that's why I say I think the only, and I could be wrong, I don't know, but the only thing that I would lean toward now is there's so much energy push, that there may be a direction in this, and with that piece of land and the way it's set up, this may be actually a good demonstrator model. We may be able to get our foot in the door, and maybe not.
I don't...
I don't wanna make a bunch of phone calls, and then somebody say, well, jeez, how come you didn't ask the board, or why wasn't people involved?
I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with you, you know, pursuing any leads.
You know, it's no decision making, by no means.
Yeah, right.
I mean, if somebody wants to give us 600 or 700,000, I'd probably accept it and tell you guys, you know, what I did.
Don't hold your breath.
But I don't think we gotta worry about that right off.
Yeah.
I think basically you're just looking for permission to inquire?
Yeah, just inquire.
And availability, and then take it from there.
I don't have a problem with it.
Nelson used to write some of the grants. He had a lot of time and good resources.
Right.
Which he said he would do that for us on this other thing if we wanted him to continue it. Not on that particular thing there, but the thing about the culverts and all that stuff.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
I got an email from him, I suppose everybody else got the same thing, I don't know.
Somebody's gotta learn how to do that. I'm sure we can do that internally with Linda's help and get off all right. All right, you got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, with that said, if there's nothing new before us, we can get into the...
I'd like to bring one thing here.
All right.
Just went around here, just touching on it. I got an email from Michael Batchery and Nelson. When he was in here, he was talking about round four of the FEMA grants. Well, they released the date yet, but they're gonna be released in round five. So if we want any, like we talked about the culverts there before, there would be a fifth round of hazard mitigation grants. So if you still want to pursue one, but have not been able to do so, there will be another chance. This will take some planning. So round five is coming out, I think, September. Just food for thought, I'm nowhere pressed for time on the last one.
We have to go back through and submit the same old thing we've done over the past...
I don't think so. Nelson wrote a little thing in here, I think he did.
We didn't have documentation enough to go ahead with this before.
Yeah, Nelson wrote, "It was Apple Woods Road, large culverts, money, if you wrote maybe some other items."
Right.
Still a chance not to getting these grants, but it might be worth the town to go after them. Let me know if I can be of help, Nelson.
We can check again. Linda and Dale and I went to that meeting. The paperwork is fairly intense on what they want to apply. And we were having difficulty trying to locate the stuff, right? The documentation that would back what we're asking for. A lot of this is floods for danger of people's houses, et cetera. In the Woods Road project, that road was taken out a long time ago, and I won't say that somebody's not in danger of flood down there, because it has happened before. But I don't know the extent, and I'd love to see a road put in there, I just don't know if... It'd have to be more questions asked, for sure.
FEMA has officially approved our extension request for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We must submit applications, HMGP, applications to FEMA, no later than September 1st. And we'll make an announcement soon to towns and agencies for the fifth round Hazard Mitigation
Do we have copies of what we submitted before?
No, we didn't do it.
We didn't do it. It was real close, there was only a couple of blocks or something.
Time was there, we didn't get the paperwork.
Submitted the letter of intent.
But we didn't have the documents to back it up, and the time was out, so... I can make a call to... The one we...
Mike?
Yes.
Ray Doherty, too. He's the one that originally sent it to Mike. I don't know if he's forgotten.
Just to see where we do stand, because...
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll get that later then, all right? Yeah, after the meeting, I'll get the number. Okay, I can touch base with them, see what's needed, and if we have a shot, we can go forward with it. If we're spinning our wheels, we'll go another direction.
Okay.
Okay, because some of the projects that they've got around, we could end up very last on the totem pole with some of the houses and places that were washed away, and roads and people's livelihoods.
Yeah, but you know, those grants are funny things, just when you think you're not gonna get it.
Right.
You know, and if you don't, if you don't put in for it, then you know, it's like, it's kinda like the lottery, if you don't play to buy the ticket, you're not in it.
Yeah, no, it doesn't hurt to try the approach, just... Okay.
Anybody, any of the board members that wish to see what we were working on prior to the, can take a look at it and see what the requirements were at the time, and then understand what we were lacking for documentation.
Okay.
We went through this, Rich, with...
If you don't have some of it to begin with...
You're right, you can't make...
You just don't have it.
You can't make it up.
Right.
We went through this with some trees in the river.
Mm-hmm.
And we went through, I can't even tell you how many weeks that turned into months. And it was ridiculous, we ended up having the trees taken out. Because it just, it wasn't gonna work.
You can work with FEMA, that's a long trip.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, that was kind of a bitter taste to spend that much time and then say, well, jeez, if you do this, maybe...
Right.
But you gotta do this, this, and this, and this.
Right.
And by then, we had a guy said, listen, give us some room down there, we'll take them out. So... Okay. If nothing else is before us, we will slide into our selectmen appointments. I'll give you a list of what we've got, and then I'll give you names that were positioned. We have fence viewers, three. Pounds keeper, small and large. Surveyor of wood. Inspector of shingles. Tree warden. Agents for welfare. Home health representative. E-911 coordinator. Vermont Emergency Management Coordinator. Planning Commission. Development Review Board. Recreation Board. BRC delegate. Conservation Commission. Grand juror. Trustee of public monies and zoning administrator. With that, fence viewers, we have three one-year positions open. We have three applicants, Casey Madison, Nelson Brownell, Hat Percy. Those are taken. Pounds keeper, small and large, one year each, both are vacant. Anybody hearing this, if they have a wish to do any of these things, please contact this office.
Could we go back and get a motion on the fence viewers?
Okay, I was gonna do this, we don't, all right?
It'll just make it more difficult to do this.
Motion appoint them.
Yep, and the three on the fence viewers, the three one-year positions?
Motion appoint them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, surveyor of wood, one year, David Dentz.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Inspector lumber and shingles, David Dentz, one year.
Motion, second.
All, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tree warden, one year, David Dentz, again.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agent for welfare, vacant position. Home health representative, vacant. E-911 coordinator, two years. We have Cindy Brownell, Mike George, and Dorothy Kimball.
And I'm not Dorothy Kimball.
We have a motion for Dorothy Kimball, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other motions on the floor? Okay, all in favor of Dorothy Kimball as 911 coordinator? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Vermont Emergency Manager Coordinator, one year, Michael George.
No.
Have a motion for Mike?
No.
Make a motion.
It's my vote.
Have a second?
Can we back up a minute? We're trying to get a mo... Come on, I'm still back on 911.
Okay.
Honey voted no, and I need to... Mike, you abstained. Okay, after 911, sorry.
Emergency manager, Mike George, one year. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, please.
Abstained?
Yes. Planning Commission, three positions, four years each. Sid Smithers, Julie Weber, Rick Morgendale, Morgenthau. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Development Review Board, DRB, two positions, three years each, two positions to fill, David Adams, Jerry Frye.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Conservation Commission, four years, three positions, four years each. Barb Slusenger. And two vacant positions. Need a motion for Barb?
Motion.
Okay, that was a second. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
And again, two open on that. Recreation Board, two positions, three years each. Tina Duval for one, and three-year vacant.
Motion.
Motion, Tina?
Second.
All in favor? BRC delegate, need one to three-year position, no, two years. Okay, we got two positions, two-year position is open vacant, and the three-year position is Walt Klinger.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we need a second for Walt?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, grand juror, one year, vacant. Trustee of public monies, we need two, one year each, both vacant. Zoning administrator, three years, six applicants. Do we have these, Linda, in one chat or no?
Cleaning, eight-year recommendation, and the other applicants were attached.
Okay, that's why I'm asking if, all right. After reviews and some discussion, the poundle planning commission is recommending Nelson Brownell for three-year term as zoning administrator. Attached will be all six applicants' letter of interest. We have applicant Walter Monroe. We have applicant Jim Hayden. We have Nelson Brownell. And we have Dave Thomas. I believe that was six of them.
I see a lot of...
Fantastic.
See a lot of writing on the papers, is there one there that's got a lot of experience, other than Nelson, or needs a top guy, or something we should read, or...
What I'll do is, I'm gonna take a minute and let you all write down through this. That way you can skim through them a little bit. While you're skimming through that, Town Office Committee, we have Donna Ihan asked to be on the Town Office Committee.
What is that committee?
That's our building committee for Town Office.
Okay. Who was it?
Donna Ihan.
It would be Norm Schobers' daughter.
Oh. Nick Morrison.
Second out.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. As you get done with one of them, let you pass them right down to Mike and... Again, while they're reading them, we have vacancies on pound keepers, small and large. Vacancy for agent for the welfare, one-year. Home health representative, one-year. Conservation Commission, two four-year positions. Recreation Board, one three-year position. Grand juror, one-year position open. Trustees of public money, two one-year positions, both vacant. So anybody that's interested, contact Linda, or somebody on this board. Again, while the guys are reading this, we have a special meeting that will be set up Monday, the 25th, at 6 o'clock, to do our documentation retention schedule.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's overing.
Uh, this, I think there's four from this board that will be going to a seminar put on by city, towns, and leagues. April 14th, I said that again, right? Yes.
13th.
April 13th in Rutland. City, towns, and leagues put on seminars and this is an all-day event of different meeting laws and executive sessions and so on. So this board will be, there'll be four of us attending that meeting. Next week is the meeting of the sewer commissioners, 6:00 at the treatment plant, panel, North
Does anybody in that rabies clinic?
I stopped by just probably about 11:30 and Karen said it'd been going pretty good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we got down there, what, about 9:30, I guess, and it was going pretty good down there.
I didn't want to point at it. Want to complain? I guess they weren't really advised that dog licenses would be available.
Uh, we mentioned it because somebody mentioned it to me to mention.
I messaged on my phone and...
Yeah.
Well, I gather that's what it was about, that dog license was it mentioned to be available or the cost or something.
It was all covered three weeks in a row for meetings and...
Yeah, I was going to say, we tried to get the board out and everybody's got a rough idea if they've licensed their dogs before, what it kind of runs.
Those cards were issued by the town clerk as well to individuals who already had previously licensed.
Should have had you bring some barbershop music or something, Rich, to fill the gap
Tough decision.
Well, we've had a, it's an interesting, we get so many applicants on one. It's just nice to see people taking interest regardless since we have this time of silence and we can bring that up, thanking people that do submit their names to fill some of these positions.
Also, too, we're still looking for somebody to take over the website.
True.
Peters. Um, maintenanceofthepunnel.org website, I believe it is, and I know there's a lot of people out there with information technology. If you're interested, we would be really interested in having you onboard to help out with that, to make it a success and build it and expand it and keep it going, not only for the townspeople, but for people that are interested in looking up what the town of panel is all about. Contact the, uh, the office.
Good chance to talk about the train. Good chance to talk about the train.
It could be.
Not right now?
Oh, yeah, also too, on the, uh, April 13th, on that Saturday, there's going to be a, uh, one of the first passenger trains ever to pass through panel, I think, it's since 1958. It's a special excursion being run from Boston's North Station all the way up to Saratoga Springs, New York. It's going to be vintage equipment. It's going to pass right through here on panel. Uh, if your kids have never seen a passenger train or, um, it might be something that they're interested in. The train should be, if all goes well, in this area sometime around noon, 1:00. I'd advise you to be careful. Um, do not go on railroad property. Uh, you could stand on a public highway or the shoulder and, uh, and view the train, take pictures of it. It should be going slow enough to enjoy it, but, um, it's going to be one of the first passenger trains through the Hoozie Tunnel, North Adams, and Williamstown panel, on up to Hoozie Junction, et cetera. So bring the kids out and enjoy it. It's something you don't see every day.
The date again?
That is Saturday, April 13th, okay? And if there's any cancellations or whatever, I'll try to let you know.
Thank you, Rich.
Of course, we'll be in Rutland.
Rich, do you know about the time that's going to be coming through here?
It's going to leave Boston, uh, around 8:00 in the morning. Um, there is a scheduled stop along the way, I believe. They have to adhere to all the speed limits, et cetera. I don't know if they're doing any run by, so, uh, a few of the messages that I've seen online on the, uh, Ralph Ann net and group, uh, said it should be here 12:00, 1:00 in that area, so.
Right when it leaves namestone, it'd be here.
But there are a lot of good applicants.
Well, he's continuing his race stipulation, it has to be a town resident. I know that's one of them is from Bennington.
I really don't believe so.
We talked about that before and they said there was no residency requirement. We had people from Reedborough and...
Yep.
Well, I make a motion that we go along with the planning committee. That's Nelson Brownell. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Nelson, do we have any nominations?
I think nominee, Thomas, whoever he was there, Thomas, Thomas, Thomas.
Dave Thomas?
Dave Thomas. He's seen him.
You have a motion for Dave Thomas? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
That's a second? Okay, we'll call the vote on Nelson.
Aye.
Okay, call the vote on Dave Thomas.
Aye.
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 Okay. Aye. Okay, with that said, that concludes our appointments, except for the openings. Again, if anybody has a desire for any of these positions or needs to know what they are, again, and stop by this office, let us know and we'll be glad to figure out what to do. With that, nothing more before the board.
Motion is...
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.